Thank you, Alderman Goodman. We have it now.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City Warrenville City Council regular meeting for November 1st, 2021. In accordance with Governor Pritzker's disaster proclamation, Section 70E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act and a determination by the Mayor of the City of Warrenville, this meeting will be held virtually. Although public attendance is not limited at this time, persons wishing to provide public comment are strongly encouraged to submit written comments via email at info@warrenville-il.us by 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. Also note, it is the city's policy to require face coverings during all public meetings in City Hall regardless of vaccination status unless a minimum of six feet of separation from others can be consistently maintained. Those of us that are here tonight are well beyond that limit, so we do not have our masks on. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Bremel?
Here.
Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Goodman?
Here.
Alderman Kreschel?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
City Clerk Julie Clark here. City Treasurer Anne Behrens. City Attorney Brooke Lenman?
Here.
City Administrator John Cokely?
Here.
Assistant City Administrator Christina White?
Here.
Police Chief Ray Toronto?
Here.
Finance Director Kevin Dahlstrand?
Here.
Community and Economic Development Director Ron Menzer?
Here.
Public Works Director Phil Kupler?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this is the portion of our meeting we set aside every time for citizens' comments. So you can do that three ways. You can send in written comments via email, you can show up at the meeting, or you can be on the phone. We have one person, I believe, in the audience this evening who has joined us, Mr. Bob Seibert.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court, on September 18th, 2021, the 4.65 acres of vacant property for the Sundance Development Project on Ferry Road was listed for sale. The price of this vacant acreage was $2,150,000. The listing agent was Trinity Brokerage LLC, and Chris Eliza, a relative of the owner, was the representative. Apparently, their game plan has changed.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have any emails this evening? We do, okay. City Administrator Cokely will read the email that we have.
Thank you. This email is from Julie Parker. She was unable to attend in person tonight, so I will read her email. I'll read it in her voice. "I would like to thank Mayor Bremel for the proclamation made regarding October being recognized as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and for the additional help in getting the word out by placing this message on the City Electronic Message Sign, and also for the post on the City Facebook page. If it reached even one person, and of course, to reach so many with your help, Mayor, it has made a world of difference. As a patient struggling with breast cancer treatments, I know how important early detection is, and the world of difference it can make in getting an early diagnosis. Again, thank you, Mayor Bremel, and also all the staff, especially Alderman Goodman, who assisted in all of the things that were done to bring this issue to the attention of our citizens, and those who may have driven by the sign and thought, yes, I am glad I saw that reminder, and it is time to pay attention to my health and get screened. Your actions have reached far beyond the limits of the great city of Warrenville and are very much appreciated."
Thank you, Julie. Any other emails this evening? None? And do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak? Just identify yourself and speak up, please.
Yes, hi, from 29W463 Amber Lane in Warrenville. And I'm sorry, I have a cold. Please forgive me for that, but I just called to register a comment regarding the ordinance approving amendment and restated Aurora Way sequestria subdivision agreement. My property at 29W463 Amber Lane runs along the south of the Conforti sequestria property, and I just wanted to say that I am in favor of the ordinance approving amended restated Aurora Way sequestria subdivision agreement. Out of all the proposed developments on that property, which was formally identified as the Conforti property, I have never seen anything that aligns with our neighborhood as well as this, and I am so grateful to the city that they're considering one house and a horse property on this land, which is in line with many of the other properties along Landon Drive, which aligns along the southern border of this property. So as somebody who borders along it, I am in favor of it, and I am grateful to the city for listening to the residents and considering this new amended and restated Aurora Way sequestria subdivision agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Anyone else? Okay, we will move along then. That's the last opportunity at this meeting we'll have for public comments. We'll go to official and staff comments now. I have only one thing. I wanted to thank the Park District for another successful Fall Fest. The weather was less than sterling, but the evening was a lot of fun, and there was a great turnout. And again, the Park District pivoted quite well to deal with the nasty weather, and everyone had a great time. So, job well done, Park District. Thank you so much. That's all I have for this evening. Clerk?
I have nothing.
Thank you. And Treasurer is not here. Alderman, we'll go through the Alderman as we always do, and give you the opportunity to make a comment or ask a question, beginning with Alderman Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no questions or comments tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Ashauer?
Just thought it was fun to see all the people that turned out for the Halloween night activities. There were people with fires in their driveway, and a lot of the, obviously, the trunk or treat that they had at Trinity Lutheran Church. It was just fun to see all the people out. That was somewhat back to normal. That's all.
Thank you. Alderman Berry?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Very good. Alderman Davalos?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Goodman. And let me, before you speak, wish you a happy birthday.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thanks to all of you for the nice birthday wishes.
Okay, Alderman Kreschel?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Widener?
Just wanted to add, besides the great special events that have been going on in and around our community, there's certainly been a lot of fall color to enjoy with all the tree plantings and the paths that lead to and through them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. And Alderman Wilson?
No comments tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Little City Administrator Cokely?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to note one, a couple of things, just about COVID, of course. It's still very important. If people haven't gotten their vaccine, please consider doing so. There's so many opportunities to do that. Booster shots are available pretty widely now if you qualify. As I've said before, I had the Johnson &amp; Johnson shot, so as soon as I found out Walgreens had them available in town, I signed up, and Thursday I got my booster shot. Be patient when you go over there. They, seems like the corporate folks have really put a lot of burden on those pharmacy people. They were doing the best they could. They were doing a very good job, but it was, it took my patience through November to get through that. So it was, it was a very good experience. I didn't have any problems. And I would encourage everybody to do whatever they can to help all of us get back to normal. It's great, I echo Alderman Ashauer's comments. It was great to see kids out going door to door. I had the opportunity to take my grandson around a few houses, and it's just nice to see people getting out, even though when we're inside, we still have to wear masks often. But hopefully, we're going to hear an announcement about that soon, too. So we're slowly working back to normal, but the more of us that are vaccinated, the more of us that are protected, it brings that disease and virus down to something mostly manageable for most people. Not everybody, but mostly. It's important for all of us, not just ourselves, to do that. So you've heard me say that before, so I will thank you all, and that's it.
Thank you, John. I will say the folks up at Walgreens on 59 are super. Mary and I went up the day after the boosters were available. They were short-staffed, they were still polite and professional, and we got out of there in less than a half hour. So it doesn't take much. A little sore arm afterwards, that was it. And now we're protected better than it could possibly be, I guess, the best, the best that we can be protected. So please do it, as John suggested. Thank you, John. City Attorney Lenman?
I have no comment, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will now move on to approve the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, hold on. We forgot something.
Yes. Thank you.
Where is it? Ah, the presentation. Brad, how are you?
I'm doing great. How's everybody doing tonight?
Sorry to overlook you. It seems like I just saw you recently at the Duke meeting, giving us a great...
You certainly did. You're going to hear a pretty, pretty similar spiel, so.
That's good to hear. I only hang around with good people, so this is what I expect.
That's great news.
We have Brad from Lauderbach and Amen to do a presentation on our FY21, 2021 Audit Report, so welcome, Brad. I'm sorry I made you wait a few minutes extra.
No worries. I certainly understand. Good evening, everybody. My name is Brad Porter, and I'm here on behalf of Lauderbach and Amen as the Audit Manager for the city to give you a brief recap on our fiscal year 2021 audit process. I'd certainly like to thank members of council for the opportunity to remote in here this evening. It's great to see all of you, albeit a little bit different circumstances as last year, but you know, that's, that's 2021 for us. So, and before I go any further, I'd certainly like to thank those that allowed us to get to the finish line here this evening. Finance Director Dahlstrand and his team did a tremendous job this year. It's been a very challenging year to make sure that the audit can, you know, go seamlessly, and we certainly appreciate all of his efforts and the team's efforts to get to this point here this evening to be able to issue on time. So thank you very much. There are two pieces of required communication that I'd like to discuss here this evening, the first of which is a three-page letter that can be obtained from the finance team remotely, and that is a SAS 114 letter. In accordance with Statement on Auditing Standard Number 114, we are required to discuss whether or not we had any disagreements or difficulties that we had encountered throughout our audit process, and I'm very happy to report that within the body of that letter, you will find no such disagreements or difficulties noted. Moving on, I'd like to jump into our comprehensive annual financial report, and it's my understanding that each of you have been distributed a copy of our audit report. And I'll reference certain page numbers as we go, starting with page 10. I think it's important we start with our Certificate of Achievement Award. The Certificate of Achievement Award is issued by the Government Finance Officers Association, and really is an award representing the highest form of financial reporting excellence that any governmental entity can receive. There are a number of compliance requirements that are required to be met in order to receive this award, which does place an additional time burden on staff, and they did a tremendous job in making sure that our transmittal letter and our statistical section are included in the audit report and include a lot of very useful information for readers. You'll notice this award is dated April 30th, 2020. These are always reported one year in arrears, and we will be working with the team once again for the application for fiscal year 2021 as well. We don't anticipate any hurdles in receiving that award once again. Turning the page to page 11. You'll find our Lauderbach and Amen letterhead here, and this is what we call our Independent Auditor's Report. It's very important to note, we had, we state what your responsibility is in this document, which is to ultimately prepare and provide a clean set of financial statements for your auditors to work with. We then go on to state what our responsibility is, as your audit firm, and that is to generate an opinion over the financial statements that we are provided. On the bottom of page 11, you'll find the opinions paragraph. And in summary, I'm happy to report once again, we've received an unmodified opinion for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2021. An unmodified opinion essentially states that we believe, as your auditors, that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. It is very important to also note that we do conduct a number of internal control walkthroughs of the different functions of the city, and we had no findings as it related to any internal control weaknesses or recommendations. Turning to page 13. Page 13 through 35 are a section that I'd like to point out on an annual basis. This is a section called our Management's Discussion and Analysis. And as your audit manager, I certainly understand that sometimes the financial statements are not the most user-friendly for any outsider. So I do want to point out, the MDNA section, as we call it, has a lot of great narrative verbiage that's going to really give you a firm understanding of the financial highlights for fiscal year 2021. Staff puts a lot of time and effort into this section, explaining why certain items fluctuated the way that they did from one year to the next, certain economic factors, so on, so forth. So I would certainly encourage you to spend some time and energy on this section here. Now we'll jump into the financial statements. Only a couple of things that I wanted to point out for fiscal year 2021. On page 43, I'll give you a moment to turn to page 43. On page 43, you're going to find your fund level income statement for our governmental funds. And for the sake of the presentation here this evening, I'd like to stick to the general fund specifically. We had a very minimal decline in our overall fund balance for fiscal year 2021 of about $12,000, so nothing significant. We ended the year in fund balance of just over $12.2 million in our general fund. On page 48, I would like to highlight the Water and Sewer Fund change in our net position. On page 48, the third line up from the bottom of the page, you'll find our overall increase in net position of about $334,000, ending the year at about $22.3 million in overall net position. And the last item on my agenda here this evening would be pages 92 and 93. It's always important to touch on the status of our police pension fund. So I'll give you a moment. I know that's in the back of the audit there. Pages 92 and 93. Here you'll find our Schedule of Changes in Police Pension Funds Net Pension Liability. And I'm very happy to report that since the implementation of GASB 6768, seven years ago, we are at our highest percent funded as of April 30th, 2021 of 77.63%. We had a significant jump this year due to the sound investment earnings on your police pension funds assets. You'll see there was over $4.3 million in interest income that was accumulated in fiscal year 2021. So certainly great news on that front. I know we're working our way up, and I think, you know, 77.6% we're in pretty good shape as of fiscal year end. So, great job. That concludes my brief presentation of the audit report and required communication. I'd be happy to field any questions that you might have accumulated.
Thank you, Brad. I would just ask for a, I guess, a citizen-friendly comment on the position of the city and how we conform to the required requirements for all the filing and the auditing and the financial dealings that we do. Could we have gotten a better report than we got this time?
You certainly couldn't, and I do want to, you know, stress the difficulties of this year as it, as it relates to COVID, and I know there's staffing changes and things that the finance team was managing, and they honestly, I'm very appreciative of all their efforts. I can't stress that enough.
Good. So we do things by the book, and we do it very well, and our staff deserves kudos for that. One last...
You sure do, and they sure do as well.
Excellent. And the 77% for the police pension fund is probably a whole lot better than many other communities in the state of Illinois, correct?
Yeah, it's very hard to compare apples to oranges, but in terms of, you know, every pension plan has differences in, you know, overall age of your plan and a number of factors that can distinguish the true position of that pension fund. But I think you're in great standing as it relates to the police pension fund.
And our requirement is to get to 90% by 2040, correct?
Yep.
And we're well on that way.
Yes, yep. And I know there's, you know, toxic consolidation and whatnot happening in the near future, but that's still pretty early in the ballgame at this point, so.
Great, thank you. I'll ask the Alderman if they have questions or comments for you. Brad, Alderman Anderson?
I'm curious. I don't know if this would be either for Brad or for Kevin, but did the changeover of the ERP system have any impact on our ability to conduct the audit this year?
It did not. No, we were still able to, I know they were running dual systems there towards the end of the fiscal year, so we were actually able to pull all the reports from the previous accounting system for fiscal year 2021.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashauer?
I'm sorry, no questions. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Berry?
I would just like to thank the Finance Department, Kevin in particular. I know everybody worked, did work very, very hard this year, especially with everything that went on with COVID. And obviously, there's a great report again. You know, this happens year after year, and it just goes to prove that we have excellent people working for us, and I'd like to thank everyone. So, there you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clerk. Well said. Alderman Davalos?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what Alderman Berry said, and just to add that this is such a reassuring thing for an elected official. You know, all, all communities, this doesn't always happen this well, and it's consistent with us and, which goes back to staff and a lot of work, but as an Alderman, it's, it's sort of a relief and it's just a very good feeling to know that we are on good footing, we have integrity going on, our numbers seem to make sense and add up, and I don't know, I'm just really proud of all that, and I'm glad that I can represent a city that is in this good a shape. So thank you for all your work on the accounting end of things.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
Thank you. I do have some questions. Some of them are probably just me not being accountant and not understanding a few of these terms, and some other comments as I go along, too. On page 13, there's a term that I just don't have any idea of what, what it is or where to look for. It says we have the non-spendable fund balances $130,386 in IPBC terminal balance reserve. What is that?
That is essentially an asset that is held at IPBC. So, you know, each of your contributions ultimately goes into this pool, and they invest those funds, and they're a portion that's allocable, almost as a receivable to, to the city. So that represents an asset at your end.
And to help a little bit, IPBC is the benefit cooperative that we are part of, and a terminal reserve is, is a, as I explained, part of what goes, goes into the fund representing the city.
Okay, okay. That makes sense. Um, let's see. If we go a little further along, page 18, where it talks about the net position of the city governmental activities, business type activities, under the deferred items, I was very confused by the big drop between 2020 and 2021 for the deferred item for police pension. I know that the police pension had an amazing return this year. I mean, elsewhere, I think maybe even on the next page, it says the investment returns were almost 15%, which is wonderful. So I just wondered what, if this related to that, or if there's some other accounting thing going on?
So ultimately, you pay our firm, actually, to conduct an actuarial valuation on your police pension plan, and the numbers as it relate to your deferred inflow, outflow, and pension liability for your police pension fund come directly from that actuary report. So it's a little bit of a cut and paste into the audit, and a process that, you know, that we conduct on our end is to review for reasonableness and things like that, but that is actually a calculation that is run directly by your actuaries. Ultimately, deferred items seek to smooth impacts from one year to the next. So if you had a big $4.5 million increase in your investment income, we don't want all of that hitting in one year when we know that next year may not be as sound, or the deferred items really seek to smooth those out over years. So there's no system to why a deferred inflow or an outflow would fluctuate the way that they do, but it's essentially an account on your balance sheet that seeks to, you know, aid in smoothing big impacts to your, to your net position.
Okay, so this is probably a one-time thing because of that, that large investment income?
Correct, yeah. And I, you know, I'd be happy to follow up with our actuaries on more specific questions, but again, that, those numbers come directly from our actuary team.
Okay, all right. So I, I just wondered if there was some explanation, someplace else that I should have already been aware of?
No, no.
Okay, um, I guess, moving on to page 20, this is not a question, it's, it's just a comment. You know, noting that our governmental activities expenses decreased almost 28% in the year of the pandemic. I think that's huge. That should be emphasized, that should be highlighted, should attract our attention, and it should create a lot of compliments to our staff for really responding to a crisis well, and for finding ways to put off expenses that we couldn't afford to do when there was, you know, a major pandemic affecting our city's revenue, and we weren't sure what was going to happen. I think this really deserves being underlined and staff being complimented for their hard work. And I know we've talked about this in some of the specifics as we go along, but just to sort of see it from the big picture level, I think it's, it's really worth emphasizing and underlining a little bit. But on the next page, 21, this is again a small thing, and I'm just confused. It says that our interest income for our business-type activities had a, a loss of $7,480. I may have to sort of find that in the detail on page 49. I just don't know how, you know, the interest on our Water and Sewer Fund can be negative. So what's, what's happening there?
Without, you know, specifics in terms of our account mapping and things like that, it's, it'd be difficult for me to give you, you know, a sound answer. So I'd be happy to report back to you. I know it seems like Kevin wants to chime in here.
I was going to say, a little bit, bit of that is the timing of when certain investments will mature, as, as opposed to when, when our books, and you'll see certain times where we show a loss at April, but then by, by, you know, June, that might turn around and become a complete gain. So it's just the timing of when the audit hits and the timing of when the investments related to the fund actually have maturities and that kind of thing.
I think that's a great answer. Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, yeah, that, that helps answer it. I know it's a very small amount, and you're not going to have a large amount of investment income in the fund balance of the year like we had the year before, but in flat, I would understand. Negative just seemed a little confusing to me. I mean, in a couple of places, it's called investment income, and on a couple of places, it's called interest received, 48 and 49, I think it, same numbers labeled slightly differently. So I thought, if it was just an interest-bearing account, it wouldn't be negative, but if it's some sort of investment other than that, then it might be some option there.
Yes, because we do, there is money invested with both the Illinois funds, and there's more money also invested through a communal investment account at Fifth Third Bank as well.
All right. And then I guess my last comment is just sort of a, a blanket comment about how much easier it was to review the audit this year because we had so much detailed month-by-month updates on, you know, for example, the revenue changes during the pandemic. So a lot of these things were very familiar, and I already sort of had a pretty good grip on before we even got to this point. I know audits are done several months after the fact, so you have to sort of put your head back in the space of where you're at the end of the fiscal year a little bit, but I just wanted to, again, thank you for your very detailed reporting and keeping us updated on all this information so that, you know, we can really have a good grasp on what's going on financially with the city. So thank you, Kevin. Thank you to the rest of the Finance Department staff. Please pass on our regards.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kryschel?
I have no questions. I echo what the other Aldermen are saying about this. It's always good to get good news like this, so I appreciate it, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Alderman Widener?
Yes, I'd like to thank Brad for the report on behalf of Lauderbach and Amen, and also wanted to just express my appreciation and congratulations to Director Dollstrand on his leadership and oversight of the Finance Department and their efforts at professional financial management, and always appreciate the financial recommendations and detailed record-keeping that comes, stems from the Finance Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
No, I have no further comments. Most of the comments that we've made, I certainly agree with. It's a good report, and thank you for our great financial department that we have here. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. And finally, City Administrator Cokely.
Turned it on and off. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. First of all, I will echo some of the comments. Kevin and his staff do an excellent job with fiscal controls and the accounting work. We've come to expect great things because they've always performed the great things with all of that, and the outcomes show and prove that out. Second thing, I wanted to, I guess, reiterate a little bit now. Alderman Goodman brought up, touched on it, but you heard early on in Brad's presentation about the General Fund having almost no change, which, if you don't look at the details on here, that's a real head-scratcher because we went through a major revenue crisis and problem worldwide, not just in Warrenville. And that she hit on a lot of that, and thank you, Claire, for doing that. That was because of all of the management and the staff, across the senior staff in the department and the council, working together to cut back, to reduce, to put in pay freezes where needed, to cut back on projects, to hold off on things. And gotta give some credit where credit's due because we did get some money from the federal government in that year, shared through the county. The, I'll get the letters wrong in which money was which, the-
The CARES.
Money, CARES, thank you. I'm already in the ARPA money now and looking for more, but anyway. So, that did help our bottom line immensely. I don't want anybody to think we were crying wolf. We were not. It was a very fiscal '20, fiscal '21, very difficult years to manage. Fiscal '22 is less bad, but with all that hard work and thank you to the council and people that went before us that also built up our reserves, and we had some plans to do those things, we were able to get through it. But I just want to leave that without comment. And again, Alderman Goodman, thank you for pointing that out because somebody just casually listens to it, doesn't read the management and discussion, quite a bit of volume there and information, or look at the audit, and they'd think, wow, that just, the city keeps saying they're crying poor, and there's no truth to it. But it wasn't without a lot of, a lot of hard work by many, many people and a lot of leadership and tough decisions, and including the council. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And that was without service cuts, and it was taking care of our employees. Well done. Well done, staff. Kevin, you and your staff, again, did a remarkable job. You do it every year. We're very proud to be associated with you, and I want you to take the night off, okay, after this meeting? I know there are many nights that you've worked really, really late. Tonight, you deserve the rest of the night off, so right now you can go home if you're not home, all right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, now we can move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Thank you, Brad.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the November 1st, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
We have a motion and a second on the agenda. Are there any changes? Please identify yourself and speak up if so. Hearing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Kryschel?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Thank you, Julia. The agenda for this evening has been approved as presented. We have one set of minutes that need approval also. Again, back to Alderman Widener.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the October 18th, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Motion and a second on the minutes. Any discussion of those minutes? Again, if you have something to add, please identify yourself and speak up. Hearing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Kryschel?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Thank you. The minutes are approved as presented. The consent agenda for this evening, Item 6A. Accept staff recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02021-40, approving and amended and restated Aurora Way/Sequestia/Sequestria subdivision agreement. B, accept Plan Commission recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02021-41, approving a signed variance for 28 West 571 Batavia Road, which will provide relief from the wall sign projection restrictions for the recycled cycling bike shop. C, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2021-64, awarding the contract for the 2021 asbestos abatement and building demolition to Omega 3 LLC of Elgin, Illinois, in the amount of $60,503. D, accept Mayor Bremel's recommendation and approve the appointment of Mark Taylor to fill the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Ward 4 vacancy for a term expiring January 19th, 2022. E, accept Mayor Bremel's recommendation and approve the appointment of Bob Vavre to fill the Plan Commission Ward 4 vacancy for a term expiring May 20th, 2024. F, receive and file FY 2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the audit report. G, receive and file minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals meeting held on October 21st, 2021. H, receive and file minutes of the Police Pension Board meeting held on August 10th, 2021. I, receive and file minutes of the Police Pension Board meeting held on September 14th, 2021. J, receive and file report of invoices paid up to October 27th, 2021 in the amount of $59,110.01. And K, authorize expenditures for invoices due honor before November 5th, 2021 in the amount of $165,233.08. May I have a roll call, please?
Excuse me, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bremel.
Ah, yeah.
Second, Alderman Wilson?
We get it all done, not always in the right order, but it gets done. Thank you, Alderman.
All right, Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Kryschel?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
And Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
All right. The consent agenda as presented has been approved. We have nothing under the regular agenda. We have nothing under unfinished business. No new businesses listed. We have no need for a closed session. This is one motion I will not miss. We have a motion to adjourn, please.
I move to adjourn. Senator Wilson?
Something in the water tonight, Alderman.
Yeah, it is. I tell you what.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, and could I have the final roll call, please?
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Kryschel?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
And Alderman Wilson?
I, I've just been watching too much C-SPAN. Thank you. Good night.
One last comment. Before we adjourn, I just wanted to say that it has been a most difficult year under circumstances that none of us would have anticipated so many things that we had to adjust to. As well as saying thank you to Kevin, I want to say thank you to all of our staff. I couldn't ask for a better staff for this community. Everyone does a superb job of always putting the best interests of the community first, always going the extra mile, always following up with citizens' requests, always getting things done. Twice, we've been walking dogs on the weekend, and I've seen people from Public Works or the Water Department out doing something that they had to do on the weekend. They are available whenever they're needed, and they're there. So, again, thank you. A heartfelt thank you to all the staff. You did a superb job this past year. I expect even better in the coming year, and I know that you will do it. So, we are adjourned.
Good night.
Good evening, everyone.
This conference is no longer being recorded.